And call to order the November 27th, 2018 Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and one individual, liberty and justice for all.
Wow, we haven't seen this many people in a long time, so welcome. So, we are to the approval of the agenda. Are there any proposed amendments? Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add to the consent agenda. It would be F, excusal of Councilman Chang due to personal obligations.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Chang. Any further discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's been added to the consent agenda as item F. Do we have any other proposed changes? Councilmember Clausen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove item C off of the consent agenda and put it with the business items.
Item as item F, potentially?
No, G.
As F in the business?
Oh, in the business, of course.
Moving it from C to F.
Yes.
So, four F. Four C is now seven F. Okay. Is there a second, Councilmember Deener? Thank you. Any discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item has been moved. Any other additional additions, subtractions moving? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved for this evening. We are to our first citizen comment period and is for anything that is on this evening's agenda. We've got a full house here, so I'm going to hold everybody to that three-minute rule, so the light will tell you when you're done for this evening. So, anyone wanting to address the council for anything on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself for the record.
I'm Bob Hampton, owner of West Bay Center in Port Orchard. And I'm here tonight to ask that the council reconsider's the parking lot restrictions that have been initiated in Etta Turner Park. These restrictions violate the terms of a development agreement that I have with the city that was granted whenever I was given a development agreement in exchange for easement that I had given to the city across the shoreline of my property for the creation of the shoreline pedestrian pathway. Paragraph 4.2 of the reciprocal provisions of my development agreement state the following: "The city shall continue to allow the owner's customers to use the city's parking area dedicated to Etta Turner Park when the owner's lot is full. The council needs to be aware that the majority of time when my lot is full, it is because a city sanctioned event such as the holiday run, 4th of July celebration, or fathoms of fun parade has consumed all of my available parking. Up to this point, my lot, which holds up to 200 cars, has been made freely available to the public for these events. My property, which has likely provided more free parking than any other property in downtown Port Orchard, is already the ultimate victim of the parking lot restrictions now in place in the Etta Turner Park. Already, I am seeing the negative effect of this action on my property. Now, only, now, once the only two remaining Etta Turner park slots are taken, people don't know where to park, so they end up parking in my lot. So, effectively, the city is forcing me to provide public parking for people visiting the park, and the city is also effectively taking away the ability for my tenants to park on the city property. And this is in complete violation to our agreement that we have. The council should also be aware that the only vehicular access to the Etta Turner Park has to cross over my property. This includes both private and city vehicles. Up until now, that access has been secured by our agreement. However, if the city violates our agreement, then that access may be in question. There are infinitely better ways to fight crime in the park than by breaking legal agreements and creating a parking dispute with your neighbor. If this is a serious crime activity in the park, then maybe video surveillance should be installed. Breaking agreements that have served both parties well in the past should be the last course of action in this situation, not the first. I have always made myself available to assist the city with anything that benefits our common concerns. I hope to continue to do so in the future, but this action is unnecessary and only serves to undermine the relationship that is accomplished much through our cooperative efforts in the past. At a time when development is on the near horizon in Port Orchard, it is important that private property owners who may be seeking development agreements know that the city will honor its agreements."
Thank you for comments. Others wishing to address the council for items on the agenda this evening? There is a second public comment period at the end of the meeting for other items, for anyone wishing to comment. So, that'll close the public comment period. And we are on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Further discussion of the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. I think we're to the item that everyone's here to see this evening, so roughly, how long ago, Mr. Bond? Was it a year ago we started the process to seek proposals on 640 Bay Street?
Yeah, I think we sent the RFP out about this time last year.
Yes, and we entered into agreement with Waterman Partners and Steve Seago for that project, and he's here this evening to give us an update. Our purchase and sale on that property is close to coming to an end, and I think he may have a request for a future council meeting. But with that, Mr. Seago, if you want to give us an update on your project?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the time that you've given me tonight to share an update on this project. As Mayor Patonsu commented, it's been about a year since we started digging into this project, and, you know, the impetus for us and our team, and I'll introduce some of our team again, was the opportunity and the recognition that there was a change in Port Orchard that created an incentive for multifamily and development downtown. And as folks who are committed to our community and have done a lot to keep as much as we can moving forward, we decided to take a look at how we could participate to take the next step and kind of plant a flag and build a property on a site that could start a downtown revitalization with multifamily and retail. And we worked with the Kitsap Regional Library as a potential partner. And as that project evolved, as you know, we came to an agreement after we submitted an RFP and you selected us to do this project, that we would move forward. We, over the last year, in earnest this last spring and summer, put together the details of the purchase and sale agreement with the support of your staff. And as we started this, if you remember, one of the issues that we had out of the block was the site itself didn't support the parking necessary to accommodate the code and the requirements for the necessary parking for the residents there. But at the same time, there was an opportunity to explore off-site parking options, and so we started doing that. And we looked at multiple sites in the area across the street. We even talked to the city about maybe figuring out if we could help develop and construct another layer of parking up at the city lot, or we just started creatively exploring options there. In the process of doing that, we approached some downtown property owners, and we approached Kitsap Bank. They have, as you know, right behind the property here, a large parking lot that they use, and I think they even lease some of their spaces to, or share with the city. I don't remember the details there, but we thought maybe we would approach them for an agreement to maybe construct a lot there. And the reason I share this is because out of that conversation, you know, was the realization that they had their own interests and needs, and they may want to address future needs themselves for their own administrative purposes for their headquarters downtown. And so, we went back to the drawing board and stepped back and said, you know, the challenge here is perhaps the economy of scale and the size and the impact and the potential for this project is limiting our ability to do something that truly could be successful and transformative. And so, our team, and I say "our" team, that's Sound West Group, Mike's here, and I think Wes Larson will, is he here? There's Wes Larson, and I'll introduce him in a few minutes as well, is to look at how we could perhaps expand the footprint to a larger project, which evolved into what became a master plan project. And so, this last summer and fall, we haven't been hiding anything. We just didn't have the ability with all the discussions with landowners and other potential partners to reveal to the public yet what we were working on. But we finally came to the agreement that we wanted to develop a master plan project for downtown Port Orchard. And I'm going to show you a little bit about the footprint of the area that we're talking about. And I'll also say before I do that, a lot of this was also motivated by an additional development this last year, which was the designation of downtown Port Orchard as an opportunity zone. And I want to thank the mayor and the staff for helping make that happen. And that created, from our own perspective, an understanding that we might be able to do more than otherwise the project that we had first developed or launched into might provide. So, with that in mind, we realized that we had an opportunity to look at a bigger footprint and a master plan approach. And so, I'm going to show you the footprint of the area that we've been both assembling properties and working with landowners to agree that we could take the next step to organize a master plan project. And that is the area you see up there on a little more than seven acres on the screen there. And it's the area within those crosshatched lines that go above Prospect, down Frederick, across Bay Street, down to the waterfront, including waterfront all the way back around the waterfront to Geiger and back up the hill to Prospect. And out of that exploration, we retained a company called GGLO, which is a large national but based in Seattle, a design and architecture firm that is very competent and successful doing projects like this, to assemble the conceptual options that may be available to develop this site in a way that could truly accomplish more than just a one-off 40-some unit multifamily building. And we began working with potential partners, stakeholders, tenants, et cetera. And as we went through that process, we realized that there was a missing piece to this that drove the interest or the disinterest of the likely partners and users, which was a community center, a component that was necessary to truly provide the amenities that would support the private users, the public. This community's been starving, if you will, and I'll say that as somebody who grew up here, for a central gathering place, a place that could be used for a multitude of functions, and I'll go into that in a little bit as well. And so, when we started this, we looked at, you know, the first phase of this is where could we start and where would the, and this is from, again, from council, we created five different options for this entire footprint. And what you see outlined here is what we call Phase One. And we've agreed that the community center belongs where it is for a number of reasons, but it is truly a wonderful location on the waterfront. And understand also that part of this includes substantial waterfront restoration. And the community center is a big piece of that. It's returning the waterfront back to this community in a way that allows the public to actually access the waterfront, not just look at it over a railing. And that's the first piece, was building around the existing footprint of, I'm going to, whoops, I'm going to go back here and show you, here we go, show you the, this is the 640 site right here. And the idea was to develop a mixed-use, multifamily, retail, commercial project there with across the, what we call the, we call it the harbor steps affectionately, but it's a hill climb from the waterfront all the way up to Prospect that aligns perfectly with the Brothers Mountains if you're standing at the top of Prospect. And on the backside here, a commercial office center as well, that would all be served by this community center, as would the additional phases of this project moving forward. And so, we also realized that, you know, our 640 project included the vacation of Frederick, which is no longer part of the plan, so we're kind of in a spot where we need to address how we move forward, and I'll, at the end of my presentation, I'll make a request on that. But we had four objectives here. One was, of course, to, you know, to return the waterfront to the community, create a community center, but also create parking downtown and add to the inventory of parking in a substantial way to support these uses, as well as the community center, and eventually this phase as well. So, I'm going to show you a couple of versions of what that looks like in terms of the parking component and how it's kind of buried into this wonderful pedestrian space that goes all the way to the waterfront with a public plaza here and a public gathering place on the waterfront as well. Let's see here. This is a, this is just a view, this is, you know, don't get, don't think that we don't have granular design components that are more sophisticated than this, but this gives you a good example or idea of where the space of the buildings would fit, if you will, in terms of, and they don't have to be the exact elevation. This is just a perspective based upon the existing code or zoning about where we would situate buildings for the first phase and left the, you know, the Phase Two kind of blank until we get more buy-in and involvement with stakeholders, especially when it comes to shoreline regulations and permitting, that's a little more complicated. But you can see that this hill climb goes right up here, comes to the waterfront plaza here, and the community center, I've already, we've already, Rice Ferguson Miller is developing the design right now for the community center. That piece is going to be situated in this, hopefully in this location here with a perspective that's not consistent with what you see here, but obviously more attractive and placed appropriately. So, the key part of this was, with the community center was, and I'm going to flash through a couple of slides to show you, this is the first level of parking. This area here is a three-stall, a three-story parking structure, which provides, as you'll see as we go through, the third story parking here. Let's see. There we go. Let's see, it won't go, there we go. And then up to the top of the residential and looking down at the community center. But the idea is to provide adequate, you know, parking for this site, and the total parking for that first phase, the three levels you saw there, is 261 stalls, constructed stalls. The entire master plan project proposes about 465 constructed stalls. The master plan project also considers that we could develop about 207 apartment units overall, with the first phase being about 80 to 85. So, to give you an idea of the phasing and the consideration of looking at a long-term master plan to phase in, starting with this community center and these first components, the reason that we wanted to come to you tonight to make sure that you were up to speed is to, one, talk about the existing agreement we have to close at the end of the year, and, two, also to share with you that we're in the process of submitting to the Kitsap Public Facilities District a funding proposal for up to two-thirds of the community center. And that will begin on Monday night at a presentation in front of their board, and then a full submittal by the end of the year. We've also taken into account multiple moving parts, which include the city's sewer lift station and stormwater storage project as a necessary integration into this project. We've begun thinking about how that could, that fits and how that could work. And I'll also tell you that the Port of Bremerton is our public partner on the community center application to the Public Facilities District. And they'll be working with us going forward to flesh out fully a proposal to fund both up to, again, two-thirds of the community center, as well as the, we'll do additional fundraising for the remaining portion. And we're pretty strongly convinced that, based upon what we know about what we can do downtown, that the community center really is a key component. If it doesn't happen this go-around, we'll take a step back and rethink how we'd move forward, but we're confident that we have the argument and the, frankly, we fit their criteria perfectly, hand in glove, in terms of what they're looking to fund when it comes to a project that both provides community benefits as well as creating economic development with certainty. If this happens, then the rest of this will fall into place. And I want to touch on real quickly to the programming summary. This is the community center programming summary, and again, this is a part of the ongoing work with our partners, Rice Ferguson Miller. And you can see that the Kitsap Regional Library is the primary tenant, and Sue Whitford and Kathleen Milson are here tonight. Jill was, had to go to a Board of Trustees meeting, Jill Jean, but they're very committed to partnering with us on this as well. You can see the objective of the programming is to provide an activated multi-use amenity of conference center, a meeting place, a public or private, it could, you know, wedding space, waterfront-connected. Part of the project includes, and I didn't touch on it, and I'll come back to it, daylighting the stream. There's a little creek that happens to bubble up just behind you. You probably know that. There's these artesian wells that are always trying to escape, and they're in a pipe going into Sinclair Inlet over there. We're going to daylight that as part of this project right behind the community center and make that a part of the public connection to the waterfront and to the stream. But one of the interesting advantages and opportunities here as well is that the Bremerton Conference Center, which is also a PFD-funded project, is interested in this from the perspective and the standpoint that this creates an additional value or amenity to them. And I've been meeting with Lori Main, who runs the conference center there, and they recognize that this, these programs provide for us, for our potential corporate downtown users, businesses downtown, public, all the meeting room opportunities, potential fitness room, maybe a small restaurant, a catering kitchen to support events. Instead of having to go to the conference center to do our rotary crab feed, we can do it in Port Orchard. We can take on the kind of events that we can't find a space for sometime. I know Sean's not here tonight, so I won't tell him that McCormick doesn't always work, but it doesn't always work. And so, we need to find a place that works for more than just some certain events. But the advantage is for the Bremerton Conference Center is there are projects or conferences or events that exceed their own ability to accommodate. And they look at this and think, what an incredible value to our ability to book projects or conventions and work with you in partnership. So, they look at this as a real positive, not a competitive, relationship with their own purposes. So, I'm going to go through the last, and this just gives you a spatial connection between the terms of the space of the users and the types of users and how they fit into this 24,000 square foot community center. And so, before I conclude, I want to invite up my partners, Wes and Mike, and they're going to share a couple of thoughts, because, you know, we've been working on this earnestly for almost a year. And a lot of this that you see, this is just a small piece of what we've been working on, is a result of their commitment to making this happen and their confidence in the opportunity here in this project. And so, Mike and Wes, why don't you come up for a moment, and if you have anything you want to share before we conclude, because I don't want to take your whole night here?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Mike Brown. I'm a founding principal of Sound West Group, along with my partner Wes Larson, CEO of the company. Steve did a really nice job of articulating the concept, I think, and the process, so I won't go into that. My piece of this is more about, you know, why Sound West is interested in the project and why here and why now and that kind of thing. So, really, Steve used a term earlier, you know, transformative, and that's what this project is about for me and I think for Sound West. Our mission statement is developing community with vision and integrity. And to be honest, when I first looked at this project, when Steve first brought it and it was just 604 and it was just 40 apartments and one building on a postage stamp lot, it really didn't have very much juice for me. And in fact, in some ways, the smaller project is harder to make successful because it's not transformative. It's not large enough to be impactful. But when you get to a project of the magnitude that we're talking about here, and if you can put this thing together in phased pieces and bring in public partners like the library, like the port, the community involvement for the community center and the rethinking of the waterfront, it's an impactful project. And this is the kind of thing that I think Wes and I both agree, that's what gets us up in the morning, keeps us doing this. We joke a lot that at this point in our careers, we're a little more selective about the things that we do. Building strip centers isn't as fun for me as it used to be. So, this type of a project has got some juice in it, and the really, really wonderful thing for Port Orchard is that it is transformative. It has the potential to be a game changer in downtown, to start a different trend, which I don't believe that just 604 on its own does. It would be a start, but it would be just a, maybe a spark instead of a flicker. And so, when you can have such an impact and create so many community partners and so many users and really think about what the potential long-term for Port Orchard is with a project like this, it's just really significant. Combine that with one other thing, and you'll notice if you've seen some of the Sound West projects, that they, we focus on the ferry terminals, the hubs, and the ferry, the existing foot ferry that's here, the possibility that the fast ferry could come to Port Orchard if the demand was here is very enticing. And that connectivity with Bremerton and across the sound, and it just makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons. So, I think that's it for me, but thank you very much.
Well, yeah, I second everything Mike says, and this project fits right in our wheelhouse. So, we've got projects ongoing, various stages of development from Bainbridge Island, Bainbridge Landing, which will be opening in March. We've got, I think we're the largest property owner now on Front Street in downtown Paulsboro, so we're looking to build on the character and enhance the Village of Paulsboro, Silverdale Bremerton, of course. And this project really will function well to sort of, you know, the barbell, the other side of the barbell to what we're building on Marina Square, which is a high-end hotel and apartment community with extended stay units to accommodate the shipyard. But this is really, I mean, with that five-minute connection, the waterfront access, we're working on shoreline access and opening that up to the public realm as we are here. So, it's just a great synergy. In terms of our capacity, as I mentioned, you know, we, I mean, we're building from Bainbridge down to now Port Orchard. We are now issuing our first offering in the public markets, capital markets. So, to fund our $100 million project, plus million dollar project in Bremerton, we'll have a $50 million offering on the street that'll be the nation's first opportunity zone fund, right here in Kitsap County in Bremerton. And so, we're confident that we've got the capacity to, you know, not only, I mean, this is obviously a great project, we'll stand, you know, we'll perform very well, but we've got the capacity to bring it to realization, and, you know, it's a great vision, and I just would encourage you all to really, you know, embrace it, get behind it. We are all the way in and, you know, committed to it, so we just look forward to working with you and all the public components of the project and seeing a really great project come to fruition. So, thank you.
Thanks, Wes. And so, I'll conclude. I mean, I could go on for hours, honestly, I could, about this with more detail, because it's been quite a journey, and there's so many more amenities that I wish I could share with everybody here. There's some really special waterfront restoration components that we've designed, beaches that we're creating. Because the port is in the middle of their own Bremerton or Port of, Port Orchard Marina redevelopment, you know, they got the breakwater project, but also some downtown waterfront work, it fits perfectly in timing with what we're trying to do. So, the pieces are falling together, and the one thing I keep hearing from all the stakeholders, from the people who want to invest, the people who want to partner with their land, is the stars just seem to be aligned on this. And they talk about you, they talk about the city, they talk about the underlying code and the MFTE, they talk about the opportunity zones and the fast ferry, and that there is an alignment of pieces, of resources, where typically there's always one fly in the ointment that makes something more difficult. And so, there's going to be challenges. This isn't going to be easy, but the first step is to get this community center project on the table through this submittal process. So, the first request I have from you, for you tonight, is that you would consider a letter of support to the Public Facilities District for the community center project. And I'd be happy to meet with you individually, if you'd like me to, to share more details about the programming. We've got a meeting Friday morning at RFM to finalize what's going to be our presentation on Friday, so give me a few days, but next week I'll have more time. And the second request I have for you is that, you know, I don't want to be disingenuous, we talked about 640 all summer, and we were in the middle of all this, and I couldn't, we couldn't say where we were yet, and now we can. So, we didn't want to close with the purchase and sale agreement that we had on the table then, because we're not going to propose vacating Frederick. We're not going to propose that as part of the value of the property. We're going to keep that intact and make that an access point for parking. So, there's some little issues we need to fine-tune, and we also need to complete our overall- our overall assembly and the next steps. We've got a lot of properties tied up that are all gonna close between May and August of this year, and the, the goal is to get it done by June, so that we, with our, as Wes mentioned, the opportunity zone funding that we're working on, to help capitalize some of that. So what I would also request is you give us a, a six-month extension on the closing, with the idea in mind that we're part of something that's a little different than we, we first proposed, much different, and taking into account that we have invested substantial resources and time to get to here. This is as earnest as we can be about our intent. And so we hope you take that seriously. So that's the, the second request, is you consider doing that, and then allowing us in the process to sit back down with your staff and the mayor and reorganize the purchase and sale to reflect accurately what would be the acquisition of the 640 parcel.
So we have two requests from Mr. Seago. One, I think we, the purchase and sale, we'll take up, I'll make it as a agenda item at our next council meeting for you to discuss. And the second request, I already have on our agenda for a discussion item towards the end of our agenda, but at this time, do you have questions for Mr. Seago or comments? I know. Mr. Clausen?
I guess I have a question, and it's more of the, the timing. I'm excited to see this project supportive. The extension of the purchase and sales agreement, how do we extend something that we don't know exactly what it's gonna say until after you've sat down and worked out the details about Frederick and so on? So is there a way, Madam Attorney, that we can somehow, or can this negotiations be done before the current one expires and give us time to be able to act on a new one?
I think we've got two weeks to get it, get it back, and we, we would just, I think it could be a modification and an extension, because we're gonna remove.
Well, we have the modifications within that two-week period, is what I'm asking, I guess.
I, I'm gonna look to Sharon. I don't believe it's that complicated in the purchase and sale.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that the modifications, Mr. Clausen, would be just the footprint, which would be reduced in size, and also the, part of the, the proposal from the original was the public benefits and amenities that we're adding as value, which were specific to that site. Now the public amenities and benefits are exponentially greater, so not sure if we want to calculate the entire project in that process, but just to make sure we have those pieces aligned too, I think we can, we can do that over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that would be my only question, is just being able to get the document crafted such that when it comes time for extension, it's complete. That's my only question.
The goal would be to have it back to you in two weeks, but we do have one more council meeting before this agreement expires three weeks out. So that way we get, maybe get it to you, and if we've got concerns or questions in the document, we've still got another meeting to work on it before, before the end of the year. Councilmember Deener?
Thank you, Steve, and, and Mike and Wes for your presentation. I, too, like John said, I'm excited about this. The, what is the overall net gain in parking that you see with, with this project?
So we calculated the, you know, the, it's, it's different because a lot of on-street and then the parking lots in the, in the back that are kind of calculated. So we did it kind of by pieces. For example, the Marina gets an additional 50 parking stalls if they need, which is talking to the commissioners as much more than they want. But, but the, the net is based upon structured parking, which doesn't exist now. It's substantial, it's in the hundreds, but it has to support the multifamily components. We, we've done a couple of calculations for that. The final details of the waterfront master plan will dictate how we reshape those parking lots and include them in the proposed projects on the waterfront side. So it's a little bit of speculation, but it's definitely a substantial net gain that, from what we've been able to identify so far, adds additional net public parking opportunity. And the one thing, you know, I, I didn't really touch on, and I should, is that if you look at the slide related to the, the parking, the, whoops, the idea is that the community center's parking is supported by these 260 spaces stalls over here, which in the evening are almost all available, a lot of them are for the multifamily, but in the daytime, a lot of those are as well, as well as the, the port's parking stall that, parking area on the, the boat ramp side that now, for example, WWCA uses sometimes for, for events. And, and by the way, there's some folks from the, the theater here tonight as well. We've talked to them about, hey, how would they like to put some shows on in a new community center, and we're, we're gonna talk about that some more, so.
Is that an overhead walkway, or are they gonna be crossing Bay Street?
They're gonna be crossing Bay Street. We've talked about that, and it's complicated, as you know, Beck, you've helped us with, I should say, Councilmember Ashby, I apologize, with the, the questions about the, the use of the state highway. But the, part of the, the work that the, the master plan design team has done is to design a, kind of a traffic calming component to the, the development, and that might include a, you know, raised area a little bit on the crossing area at Bay Street. The purpose is to try to activate that community center and waterfront side for all the users and office dwellers on the uphill side as well. So we, we've got some plans for that. We even talked about a signalized, you know, slower stop, kind of like what you have on Bay Street downtown now with the flashers, but maybe a little more serious than that, depending. So it's all for discussion.
Councilmember Deener?
How much money are we gonna be asking for PFD to support?
Well, you know, we haven't, we, we haven't finished the design yet, so we haven't got the final number, and that's gonna be done by the end of the year, but we think it's about a 12 to 15 million dollar project. The PFD will only consider projects that are over 10 million. So we're in a good spot there. So our request to them could be anywhere from eight to 10 million, or, you know, or if it was a 15 million dollar project, depending upon the, the size of the final bite, but in that range. And you, you're probably aware that the PFD recently were authorized by the legislature to go back out to the public, offer bonding capacity for projects just like this, and that's what they're looking to do. Yeah.
Councilmember Rose, Rose Peck?
Hi. What do you look at as a timeline for construction and completion?
So internally, we have our own thoughts and, and don't want to get too far over our skis, but I, I will tell you that our objective is if we can move forward and the community center falls in place the way we plan now, that we would go to permitting entitlement and probably work on a development agreement for the project, to try to get that done by June of this year, this year, next year. With the idea that about a year from now, in that range, a year and three months, in that range, we'd, we'd look at breaking, breaking ground for the parking garage in the beginning. But I defer to Mr. Brown for some of those more technical construction details.
Councilmember Rashby?
Yeah, my other question, when you were speaking earlier, you indicated that the community center is a, a key component to getting this off the ground. You also indicated that if you're not successful with the PFD funding, then you're gonna have to step back and look at it. And my question is, you know, this is all fine, like this, you know, support it and that sort of stuff, but my concern is 640 Bay Street and getting it sold.
Right.
Because that's my commitment to the citizens of Port Orchard.
So let me, let me.
So if, 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 if the PFD funding doesn't happen, then what is your plan for 640 Bay Street?
So it's the same plan we had before we learned that the PFD was giving money away, which was, we already, you know, we'd already taken into account a plan to fund the community center. And I already had started collecting, based upon the work I do elsewhere, grant sources and funding sources. I've met with Representative Kilmer, I've met with our county commissioners, I've met with the state, the governor's office and Department of Commerce, you know, kind of cobbling together those funding sources. And I, I got to the point where I, we, I crossed the hump and what I knew we, we needed to get over a half, right? So I was getting closer. And my promise to our team was that as soon as we started through the next phase, I would shift all my energies into this project to fund the community center. The PFD fell into our laps, if you will, not, not literally yet, but the idea that they might be a source. So we shifted our energy and focus to making that happen. If it doesn't happen, we'll go back to the place we were, which is why I say, you know, reorganize. We were still working on this with the same intent, with the same desire to, to, to fund the community center. It's just that the community center truly would be a trigger if it could be funded more cleanly with this relationship to expedite this, this project.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
You would really have to move very quickly on this if you want to have all of that happen by June. What is the plan for the community outreach, for response from the community? I, I have so many questions.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm also thinking back in the day with the, the plans, the EDOL plan and all of those, the community center was something that was supposed to be on the waterfront, it was much smaller in scale, but that was always a great idea. So it's pretty easy to buy into this, but it's a lot of information all at once.
Well, I can tell you about intent and then about practical reality, and they're both the same in this case, which is nice. The, the intent is that we would, already started thinking about organizing a stakeholder group around the community center, the participants, users, the, the community and all the, the potential users, how to work with them to make sure we didn't leave anybody out when it came to those uses. But the PFD process also requires that. So going forward, they, there has to be a, essentially a steering committee that is a partner in the, the, the public component of this. It's a, you know, it's a public facility. So the good news is we're required to do it, and the better news is we intended to, as well as part of our own objective to, you know, it's, it's, it's a wonderful idea to consider what you could do, and it's also one of those things that wakes you up at two in the morning when you think, what if I forgot or we didn't include some component that should be there? And so we know that we have to cast the net pretty far and wide to make certain that we include as much of the community as possible.
Mr. Dorsey?
I just, I just have a comment. I just want to make, so Steve had mentioned earlier about the last 12 months and the, and the commitment that Sound West Group has made to this project, and I can speak from my own personal experience that the team that they've hired with Rice, Fergus, Miller, and then GGLO, they're the A-team. I mean, they've gone to the top. They, this, this is not a cheap Charlie deal. They've committed a lot of resource just to get this far. And if they continue to work with Rice, Fergus, Miller, and GGLO, the city's gonna benefit from a tremendous, high-quality project. And I just want to make sure that that, that didn't fall, I'm calling it on deaf ears. They've really brought in the A-team on this.
I encourage you to, I can send links, but I encourage you to take a look. They do projects all over the region, the west coast, the, you know, states everywhere, and they've done a pretty spectacular job. Had a meeting at Cedar, Cedar Brook Lodge, is that what it's called over there by Sea Tac? They designed that. There's just projects everywhere, waterfront projects in, in this region, but all across the country.
I, I just want to share, you know, Steve and I and staff have been working on this in earnest for more than six months, and I'm, I'm just thankful we're able to unveil this publicly this evening. I know, you know, three years ago, when I was, you know, knocking on doors, that was probably the biggest thing I heard time and time again is, when are we gonna do something with our downtown? And I, and it's so important to me and to our community that what we do sets the bar high, and I, I really think what we're seeing, the, the first glimpse of here tonight, I think is going to do that. And because where we set that bar, others will follow. And, and, and as Mark said, this is, we've got the A-team as far as the consultants that they're working with, and I personally am pretty, am very confident that we're getting a quality project here. So, Mr. Deener?
I just hope we could get a copy of the presentation.
Absolutely. Are you, would you be comfortable leaving a copy with Brandy?
Yeah. I mean, there's, you know, the, the, the only, I guess, reservation I have about it is that I wish I could tell you more. I mean, because there's a lot of more, more ideas that we've explored, more options that are really exciting, but it's just not appropriate until we get to the place where we have more feedback. To Councilman Lucarelli's point is, you know, we want to include as many people in this process as possible, and to throw something out there without more input, I think would be, you know, presumptive on our parts. So lots more to share.
Other questions or comments?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Much. All right. We are back to our agenda this evening. We have a public hearing this evening on our budget. And, Mr. Crocker, are you ready?
Yep.
Presentation?
Yep. Mayor, council members, a public hearing on proposed 2019-2020 biennial budget is required on or before the first Monday on December. The hearing allows council to hear public input, consider public comments, and make any changes as indicated by the majority of the council. Citizens and the community organizations are encouraged to participate by providing the council with their input for future infrastructure projects, public safety enhancements, culture and recreational opportunities, and other public services. Following citizen comments, the public hearing will be closed and the council may continue with its deliberations concerning the 2019-2020 biennial budget. Staff would recommend opening the public hearing.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing on our 2019-2020 biennial budget. Is anyone wishing to comment or provide testimony on our budget, proposed budget? Don't rush all up here at once. Okay. Here, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So we are on to our business items now. 7A, which is adoption of an ordinance adopting the 2019-2020 biennial budget. Finance Director Crocker?
Mayor, thank you very much. The mayor of Port Orchard completed and placed on file a proposed budget of estimates of the amount of money required to meet public expense, bond retirement, and interest reserve funds, and expense of the government of the city for the biennial period ending December 31st, 2020. As required, the city council held a public hearing on revenue sources for the coming year's budget, including consideration of possible increases in property tax revenue. The finance committee and council members met independently to study the proposed budget and held budget interviews that required the presence of department heads. Input was sought for the full council. A public hearing seeking public input on the proposed budget was held on November 13th, 2018. The 2019-2020 biennial budget does not exceed the lawful limit of taxation allowed by law to be levied on the property within the city of Port Orchard for the purposes described in the 1920 biennial budget. And the estimated expenditures in each funds are all necessary to carry out the government of the city of Port Orchard's biennial 2019-2020 period. The 2019-2020 budget reflects department head requests, mayor priorities, citizen comments, finance committee and city council input and modifications. And with that, I'd like to turn over the recommendation to the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Councilmember Clausen?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to move to adopt this ordinance, but before I do that, I just wanted to share my perspective on the 2019-2020 biennial budget. This has been probably one of the best processes that I've ever been involved in, and I've done a lot of budgets for the city of Port Orchard. I want to compliment both you, as well as the staff, and Noah in particular, for helping us through this process. I mean, this is the second time we've completed the biennial budget for the city of Port Orchard, and I think we've done a lot of great things in this particular budget that we've done even in the last one with, for example, the, the equipment reserve fund that we developed. And that was quite a process in itself, and it helps kind of standardize, and I think is gonna ultimately save the city money and, and certainly help us plan better for the acquisition of some very expensive equipment. So I just wanted to pass on my personal thanks for both you and the staff for a great job of helping us through this, and then the council. You know, it's, it's been kind of fun the last few years of the budget because the council is where they gotten involved in that process, as opposed to, for so many years, it seemed like the finance committee did most of the work, and we tried to convey what was in the budget through work studies, and then the council, bless their hearts, accepted the finance committee's recommendation and adopted the budget. But for the last couple, the council has really been involved in that process, whether it's meeting with the, the department heads to better understand it, or in our work studies of being able to go through it in, in a fair amount of detail and, and make sure that not only the council, but the community understood what was in the budgets as well. So with that, I would move to adopt the ordinance adopting the 2019-2020 biennial budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Just got a little bit of commentary I'd like to, to provide related to the budget. So, I mean, it's, it all started with all of us. You know, we, we did a retreat and you, as a council, gave us direction that, six months ago, in, to prepare this process. So, you know, the mantra in this budget was really no, no new projects, and Noah continues to remind me of that. And we've got a lot of projects on our plate, we're accomplishing many great things in our city, and, but we've got to finish what we started before we can start anything else. With that said, when we develop this budget, we've already, today we're talking about our, our first few amendments we're gonna have to make in the first quarter because we felt when we, when we... when we were developing this budget that we would have the pathway completed, the McCormick Village Park completed, and, well, nine completed. And that most likely won't be the case, in particular with the pathway project. We've suspended construction on that because of the weather, and we're just not going to try to pave it this winter and get an inferior paving process. So we'll have some balances carried forward that, you know, it's the same money, we're just going to end up not expending it at the end of this year. Those balances will get carried forward. We won't have the appropriation within this biennial budget to spend that money, so you'll have to appropriate that money in a budget amendment. So the other change is what we talked about at the retreat here a week ago, and about the community service position and merging that with our parks position. This budget doesn't reflect that. We're still, we have a meeting with the union tomorrow, and we've got a job description written and a pay scale to propose to them, and we have to negotiate that, and we'll be back to talk to you about it. But as we discussed, that should be relatively revenue-neutral, and we're combining two positions into one. So that's what I have, and we have a motion and a second. Other comments? Councilmember Deener?
I also wanted to thank staff and council members and the mayor as well for their efforts on the budget process and making it much more understandable than it's been, to me anyways, in the past. So thank you for that, and it was a learning opportunity, and I appreciate that.
Good.
Just echoing what you've said. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ashby had to step out for a moment. She was the second. Are we okay voting? We have a quorum still. Okay. A motion and a second. So you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance adopting the 2019-2020 biennial budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Budget is approved. We are on to our next item, item 7B, adoption of a resolution adopting the dispersment of funds, policies, and procedures. Finance Director Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this at the most recent study session, and so I'm going to recap. The city desires to pay its claims and obligations in a timely manner to meet the city's business needs. The current process for approving claims and releasing payments to obligated parties is structured around the timing of city council meetings. The timing of council meetings does not necessarily meet the business practices of the city or the vendors that work for the city. City staff have worked to create a policy for the dispersment of funds prior to council approval that includes proper expenditure controls. The purpose of this policy is to delegate authority to the finance department to release payments to obligated parties as a function of the city's business. This requires maintaining proper internal controls in accordance with the state auditor's requirements, as well as credentials to meet council approval. The policy will allow the executive branch of the city to operate and pay claims on a business needs basis irrespective of the timing of council meetings. It maintains the requirements of council approval on all claims approved for payment. The recommendation of staff, and again, I'd like to turn this over to the chairman of the finance committee for recommendation.
Councilmember Claussen?
Yes, I believe the recommendation is, and I wasn't at the last council, or excuse me, the finance committee meeting, but Noah briefed me on the changes to the process, as well as provided with some information straight from the auditor's office on voucher certification and the resolution. So with that, I certainly would recommend approval, and I'm going to move to adopt a resolution adopting the dispersment of funds, policy, and procedures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments?
No, but I was at the finance committee meeting, and John, or Noah did, over a couple of meetings, gave us background on the policies or how the process worked, and we asked for him to develop the policies and procedures, and he did that, and he did bring us the...
Flow chart.
The flow chart, which, and we all know that I'm the recovering banker and follow those things fairly closely, and there are definitely a lot of checks and balances. So I'm very comfortable approving this resolution. I think it will expedite our payment to our vendors.
Any comments? Okay. Hearing none. You'll be voting, we have a motion and a second. We'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution adopting the dispersment of funds, policies, procedures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any opposed? Hearing none? Resolution is passed. We are on to 7C, approval of an amendment, change order number two to contract number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc. for the Tremont Widening Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. So this is the much-awaited amendment. Order two? That's okay, council member. So on May 8th, 2018, and if you remember the last change order, I abbreviated the summary context or text so that we didn't summarize every single change order, so this is following that same abbreviated format. On May 8th, 2018, the city of Port Orchard, city council authorized the mayor to execute change order number two to contract C037-17 with Active Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the changing condition, four inch sanitary sewer force main re-alignment along Pottery Avenue, with the provision that once the work was complete, a corrected change order number two A would be brought back to council for final ratification. The final cost of the work ended up being $126,694.37, thereby resulting in a savings of $21,305. In general summary, the current value of all change orders to date totals $791,223.29, or 79.1% of the contingency value. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute the amended change order number two with Active Construction in an amount not to exceed $128,694.37.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
There were one.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the amended change order number two with Active Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $128,694.37.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions for Mr. Dorsey?
There was a typo in my summary. 128, 128 is the correct number, and that's reflected in the change order.
Nicely. Need some more blacktop down.
Well, it does, but the project is looking really nice.
It is. So we have a motion and a second for the approval of change order number two to contract number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc. for the Tremont Widening Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Change order is approved. We are tied in 7D, approval of change orders eight, nine, 10, and 11. So we're coming at it fast and furious to contract number 037-17 with Active Construction for the Tremont Widening Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Yes, thank you. This was easy come, easy go. So we, a minute ago, we saved some money, and now we've just spent it. So earlier this evening, the city of Port Orchard city council authorized the mayor to execute change order number two A to contract number C037-17 with Active Construction Incorporated, thereby amending the May 8th, 2018 not-to-exceed amount of $150,002,128,694.37, and bringing the current value of all change orders to a total of $791,223.29. Change orders eight through 11 include required ADA curb ramp revisions, that was $40,753.56, revisions to the joint utility trench alignment, $142,256.52, the city requested addition of storm drainage service connections, that was $138,477.60, and additional sanitary sewer service connections, $142,763.94 respectively. In general summary, the current value of all change orders to date total basically 1.24 million, or we're now at 123.75% of the contingency value. As I had discussed previously, we were going to hit this point where we're going to be going above our contingency. Please note that the city's CACMTM is preparing a cost-to-complete value whereby credits from schedules, or the schedule values are determined. That rough number, I don't want to overpromise and under-deliver, but we're still thinking $500,000 is what's in the schedule of values that will be unspent. But with that, we also know that there's some additional change orders that are still coming our way. So it's just a moving target, but I think the cost to complete within this month, I believe, Michael, that we'll have that cost to complete from Berger Bay, within the next couple of weeks? Okay. So as soon as we get that estimated number, we'll be working with Noah. We'll disseminate that. So...
That was Assistant City Engineer hiding in the back row back there that was providing the input.
With the utility manager as well. So staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change orders eight through 11 with Active Construction in an amount not to exceed $446,251.62 gulp.
Councilmember Claussen?
Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute change orders number eight through number 11 with Active Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $446,251.62.
Second.
Councilmember Deener, second. Questions? Hearing none? You'll be approving change orders eight, nine, 10, and 11, contract number 037-17 with Active Construction for the Tremont Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The approvals, the change orders are approved. Okay, we are to item 7F, and I put this on here to discuss...
Are we not going to do E?
Oh, E, excuse me. I did, I said, but I meant E. So we're on item E, and I added this to the agenda, and it's the public, the public facilities district is meeting next week. I know you've got a lot of information thrown at you this evening. A little background, you know, south end of the county has never had a project. We've had projects in Bremerton and central Kitsap and north Kitsap. I'm thankful that this process has been opened back up. We previously have provided a letter of support for the racetrack. It was the only project we knew of at the time. That was last summer we provided that letter previously. I would hope that we continue to support that project because it, you look at what we saw this evening and what the racetrack project is, when I look at the other list, there's 10 projects on that list, and our, the two projects in the south end of the county provide much more in the way of economic benefit and jobs than any other projects. So, you know, I'm hopeful that you guys will, you know, authorize me to write letters of support for the two projects. We are not the applicant on either one of the projects. There was, I know there was an article a few weeks back saying that we were. That was Mr. Seago doing his due diligence with the public facilities district, so all of a sudden, this project ended up on their list, and we were the applicant, and that was never the case. So they were still finding, looking for a partner at that point. Porter-Bremerton is the partner. It is on their property, or a good portion of it, and another parcel to be acquired. So there's more, I guess, to happen with this, and, you know, anyway, I hope that you can find a way to support this with the limited information that I know you have. Councilmember Deener?
Well, to get the discussion started, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to support two letters of support for public facility district projects, including the Port Orchard Community Center and the Bremerton Raceway Project.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Claussen, second at that discussion?
I would like to discuss, but didn't we already approve the letter for the raceway?
We did. We wrote one letter. I would just hope we would, if we're going to submit one now, I would hope that we submit a pair of letters, you know, because they're for their meeting on Monday night that were... I would hate for them to get the impression that we submit one for the Port Orchard project and our support for the other has waned.
Right, because I just remembered us going through that process and evaluating that project.
Yes. And we did write a letter. You know, maybe I could have written another letter, but I just felt it was important to discuss it with you this evening.
But the project that we looked at tonight, I'm enthusiastic and supportive of developing, revitalizing downtown and doing some development, and it appears as so from what we've heard this evening that it's important that a community center be in there. And my concern is one of transparency, and that is, I understand there's been a lot of issues, but as Councilwoman Lucarelli said earlier, the public hasn't seen this. Port Orchard hasn't seen this, and we saw it, you know, about 45 minutes ago. I apologize for that. I'm diabetic, and I'm, my glucose level is high right now, and it continues to beep. But I can support this, and I can support the motion for a letter of support, but it feels to me like the council is doing this with limited knowledge, limited information. We don't know what it's really going to look like. So that part doesn't feel right to me. The transparency part doesn't feel right to me, but to move forward with it, I do not want to put a roadblock up and not support the project. So that's kind of my feeling on it.
Councilmember Claussen?
I had some of the same feelings, Beck, as you, and seeing it 45 minutes ago for the first time, it's a big thing to take on. But I do, I'm very supportive of the concept of a community center. I think Port Orchard has needed something similar for many, many years, and as Cindy mentioned, we've talked about it in other planning documents in different locations, but it's always been something that the community has been interested in. I'm also appreciate what the mayor just said regarding the public facilities funding over the history. Port Orchard has been, at one point was basically excluded from the abilities to even access funding if we had a project, and it's encouraging now that we have this opportunity. And I'm familiar with the projects throughout the county that the public facilities has funded in the past, and they've always done a great job, but it's been, I guess I could say it's South Kitsap's turn, and I can't think of a better project or projects to ask for funding for than something that's going to help our community, it's going to help our downtown and revitalization, and I think there's going to be many opportunities for us as a community to continue the discussion of what it's going to look like and where it's going to fit and how, because this is a conceptual at this point, so I'm comfortable with supporting it and moving forward with the project.
Councilmember Deener?
So I also share concerns about providing a letter of support for something that we just got introduced to, but also I see it as an opportunity that we shouldn't put aside because of that. If for some reason things took a turn for the worse, at least we'd be in a position to say no rather than a position looking for something. So with that, I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
It's overwhelming. We started with a small parcel of property, and I don't feel like it was bait and switch by any means, but it's certainly much grander than what I'd even, you know, thought that would be coming forward. Fully in supportive of a letter, but I think we owe due diligence to the community to make sure that this is really vetted as we move forward, so it's a fit within our community.
Cindy?
I love the idea of the community center, and I too want to work with all of the partners to get the information out to the public and to have input as we're able. It's a tricky little situation here, isn't it? But I don't want to throw a roadblock into this project at all, and I do want to move forward, but as you can understand, we have so many questions and concerns, and I'm thinking we'll have to have a lot that needs to be discussed in the future, and as long as we're all willing to do that, we should move forward. I support the letters.
And I just want to observe that once, I believe, projects of this magnitude get rolling, there becomes opportunity for lots of public involvement and moving from concept to design and input and committees and working with the development community. So I look forward to that.
I think there's a lot more work to be done. We saw cubes. We saw, we saw cubes. They're, they're not gonna be, look like cubes, I don't believe. So, okay, so I think I've heard from everybody. You've, uh, I, I have a motion and a second for the mayor to prepare letters of support for the racetrack project out at the Port of Bremerton property at the industrial park and for the community center in downtown Port Orchard, which is also, uh, the partner is the Port of Bremerton, so. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The letters of support have been approved. So we are back to our last business item, which was consent item four C, which is now business item, uh, seven F, and, uh, Mr. Dorsey, you are the staff on this.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Councilmembers. As a housekeeping measure, working in conjunction with parking enforcement staff in the directions given at the November fifth, two thousand and eighteen Land Use Committee and the November twentieth work study session, uh, the city's Public Works Department continues to inventory existing signage to compile corrections, make revisions, and/or modifications to the current municipal code, uh, POMC ten point one two. Before I get into the staff recommendation, I think it's worthy of doing a quick summary of what we discussed at the work study session. Within this action, there is actually five different, well, there's four, and then there's an ancillary that Councilman Clausen wanted to discuss, and so I think I'll just briefly touch base in each one of those, and so the first one is, so there was the Tracy Avenue issue that I think at the last council meeting, Councilman Clausen mentioned that he'd seen the letter, and so we've addressed that issue or plan to resolve that issue with simply striping, putting a fog line on Tracy. I think that's very straightforward, it's not gonna impact anybody, um, and it's gonna just deal with that specific request. Um, the other issue, which in my opinion is one that we really can't do anything about because it came through as a public complaint about sight distance coming down to Calve and then looking back to the east on the Bay Street towards City Hall, trying to take a left, there is a sight distance deficiency. This action will eliminate the parking stalls basically from De Calve to Valis Motors, so basically there's four or five spots right in front of Hall and Sons, um, that will be eliminated. Um, but again, I don't think that we have an option in this point because it's been brought to our attention through a public's complaint, and if there's an accident, I think we're just, we're putting ourselves in a liability situation. So I think those two are fairly straightforward actions, and they're in the, the red line version, you can see where we've just changed the language to eliminate the parking in that section. Another one that's very simple is that when we instituted the trailer parking, uh, prohibition on the city streets, we simply didn't add the infraction, and so we're just adding that infraction language, that's a class A infraction to the language there. The other one was Rockwell in that, this next summer, June, we'll have four parking stalls for the Rockwell Pocket Park, no sense in doing this again. We just, I just added in that section, I've added the Rockwell Park, which is for our, for park parking dawn to dusk like our other parks. Um, so that leaves, uh, really the, the one that's up for debate tonight, and I know that the chief is here to, uh, answer questions about his concerns, um, and I think at this point, before I read my recommendation, I'll just comment on, uh, a brief comment on, uh, Mr. Hampton's summary, and I think there's just, to me, there's two takeaways. One is, um, I was a part of that, preparing that agreement, and I was working with the previous, previous, previous city attorney, and unfortunately, at four point two, the city, there's a, there was no dedicated parking for Editerner Park. There's nothing in code, there's nothing in signage, so it said that overflow would go to this dedicated parking, well, that doesn't exist. Um, but that's a council decision to decide what to do with that. I think, um, the other thing that I took away that I do agree completely with Bob and is an issue, is you can exit that property through the Blackjack Creek Waterway, or the, it's the Maple Street Waterway. You can't get to it without going through Bob Hampton's property, so, um, because that's a one-way out by Key Bank. So that, that is an issue that would need to be resolved, and as property owner, you know, I think Bob could say, I'm gonna put up barricades. Um, so that's just kinda my input, that's kind of new from this evening, is this action, if you took this action tonight, you would actually, you would fulfill section four point two by having dedicated stalls, whether that's two or ten. I think that needs to happen. If you're gonna create parking along there so that we're in compliance with that section, I think there needs to be something added to, uh, section ten point twelve point five eighty, otherwise there is, there's currently no dedicated. So either way, I think there needs to be an action taken so that that section of the agreement is fulfilled. So I guess with that, um, I'll go ahead and read the recommendation to staff, and then the chief can, uh, provide input for discussion. Uh, staff recommends adoption of an ordinance thereby updating POMC chapters ten point twelve point five hundred, ten point twelve point five sixty, ten point twelve point five eighty, and ten point twelve six forty regarding stopping, parking stopping or standing in certain areas of the city.
Chief, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I would just say, uh, councilmembers, mayor, um, this has been an ongoing problem, mainly this last year, um, springtime, it kinda flustered. I started tracking it because I listen to the complaints that I get from the citizens, I get complaints through the mayor's office, I get complaints from the businesses that are down there, uh, I've talked to a couple of the business owners down there on occasion. I do respond to calls now and then, and I have responded to calls there. It's my job as the chief to recognize crime trends and problem areas that might be safety issues for the public, and I can honestly say that in this area where you have unrestricted parking along that curb, because there is no parking enforcement there at this time, um, it's unrestricted parking, it creates a isolated area, which is Editerner Park, which is narrow, and that sidewalk area, and it is concealed from the public eye. Uh, officers approaching, trying to patrol that area, which we have done extensively this summer, we've done several projects, trying to impact the multiple calls for service and the drug activity and the, the intoxicated individuals lounging about on the sidewalk or in vehicles adjacent to the sidewalk. Uh, we can't get in there without them seeing us, um, and we basically have to walk up because some of these vehicles may be trailers with doors open adjacent to the sidewalk. It's a narrow area, and I've done it myself, I walk up there and there's ten or twelve individuals congregated on the sidewalk, some people lying on the sidewalk. Um, they're usually, when an officer finally gets there, aren't readily available or visible law violations, but it's, it's really hard to police that area, and there have been complaints from citizens, which you haven't heard here tonight, about feeling uneasy, about walking down that sidewalk next to the park when nobody can see them, and there's a large congregation of people there. And Kitsap Sun asked for the number of calls that we, uh, reports that we had taken there this summer from June until about three weeks ago, I believe, and I, I think it was twenty-eight different calls, but that's, uh, reports, I should say, that's twenty-eight different reports. Um, and it was the variance of drug activity, drunkenness, disturbances, fights, weapons violations, um, but that doesn't tell you the whole story because those are the reports. Um, officers have been in there every day, and a lot of times they get called there and there's nothing to do a report on. So it's been extremely time-consuming for the department, trying to respond to the business owners and trying to respond to the public. I'd think it's a public safety issue to have cars parked along that curb line where you can't see what's going on in the park. And that's my personal opinion and professional opinion, and that's what we've been dealing with, and I'm just trying to find a solution so that we can eradicate that problem, which creates a better environment for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, Mayor, I asked to have this, and, and I'm sorry I wasn't at the work study to hear the discussion that took place there, so I apologize for that, but I, I guess the part that is frustrating for me is that, you know, with this action, we're letting the bad guy win. To me, this is a Band-Aid. This is, we're, we're reducing the ability for people to come down and take advantage of the parking lot or whatever because of an element that is causing us some grief, and I would hope that there's another way that we can attack this more aggressively, I guess. Uh, it was suggested earlier about video surveillance, uh, you know, maybe that's an option. Uh, I'm equally as concerned that, um, we've gotta deal with this element of our community because all we're gonna do is move it, and we're about to put in a pedestrian path to go along the waterfront that is gonna be basically out of sight when they're behind the hotel and some of those areas there, and, you know, I think we're gonna have a problem there. So I just think that we need to come up with a better solution to this problem than simply eliminating, uh, a few parking stalls that are blocking our officers' ability to see what's going on there, and, and again, maybe the video surveillance is an option, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, but I'm just concerned that we're gonna take this action, and I appreciate what Mr. Hampton said, I, I too talked with Bob a few times about that, that easement across his property for the, the current walkway, and, uh, you know, I hate to, to hate, see us eliminate parking down there, maybe, maybe it's a one-hour parking or a two-hour parking limitation that would help with some of the turnover, uh, that maybe will clear up some of those stalls and yet still provide adequate time for folks to go in and take advantage of those, either to use the park or use the walk or use the businesses, one of the three, but that's my concern, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I get-
I think we need a motion first.
Can I get a clarification from Mr. Dorsey? There are no designated parking areas right now along that strip.
Correct.
Currently, there's none. We marked out two, just to see-
What it would be like, but right now, when we say we're eliminating parking, there is no parking there now.
All that in our code. People are parking along the curb.
There are parking along there, but there are no designated spaces along there.
Currently, right, there, there was a mis-
And there's no signage like we have downtown that says two-hour parking or four-hour parking.
Correct.
It's just, it's just the sidewalk.
It's just a sidewalk.
It's just a sidewalk.
Right.
And the only ingress to that is across Mr. Hampton's property.
Correct.
Yes.
So I would suggest a motion-
Councilmember Deener?
So that we could have further discussion?
Well, I can make the motion just to keep us flowing.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance, thereby adopting POMC chapter ten point one two point five hundred and, uh, zero point one two point five six, that's-
That's a ten.
Yeah, ten point one two point five six oh, and ten point one two point five oh, and ten point one two point six forty regarding parking, stopping, or standing in certain areas of the city with final form approved by the city attorney. So then, um-
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second for Councilmember Lucarelli?
Second, okay.
Yes, Mr. Deener?
So I, I went out and, and met with Scott on Saturday night, and, uh, as I drove up, I observed some activity going on around the dumpster, somebody saw me coming and they, there was a car parked there and they darted away, so things are happening in that area. Uh, we're not, we're fooling ourselves, thinking that it's not. Um, and I think the chief has done a good job explaining that some of the best things you can do to try and eliminate some of that activity is, is to make it more family-friendly. So by opening up the visibility and maybe not having a parking, you are increasing opportunity, uh, for people to come in and enjoy themselves, and the people that are doing some of these illegal things don't really wanna be seen, as it's been explained to me, and he does a much better job of explaining how that phenomenon works. Um, but at the same time, I also, something new tonight was that while people can get out of that, they don't have necessary legal right to get into the, the parking area, and so that, for me, kinda is a, a bit of a game changer, and I wonder if we should consider excising this element out of the ordinance and maybe talking about it more.
I think it's also important, I, I guess another point is, in all of our parks, Paul Powers, which we have major problems with, Van Zee, McCormick, our standard is dawn to dusk in four hours, and it's similar to what the port has down for their park. That allows police officers to go in when it's dark in all our parks, and if there's anybody parking there, typically it's for other activities, and so, um, you know, whether we're talking about compromise, I mean, you theoretically could have, in the day, you could say it's two-hour parking, because I don't think the issue during the day, I've never seen the, the, the parking lot full, and that agreement does say it's an overflow only, but you could have it set up that during the day, and we don't do parking enforcement after four thirty, you could have it so that it's limited to two hours during the day so that it is for, so that the police can at least patrol it and get rid of the people that are sitting there all day long trying to steal power and come in there with a trailer, that would at least allow it to be enforceable during the day. The only issue is going to be evenings after dawn and dusk, when, I guess, when Slaughterhouse is wanting more of that parking, I don't think it's a daytime thing that they're having overflow issues. Um, whether that's a compromise, I know that isn't gonna, the chief won't support that because it's, the nighttime is probably when it's most dangerous, but that's a potential alternative, whereas during the day, it's the whole strip, not the two, but that entire strip is limited to two hours, and it's, um, you know, for park, or it's just limited to two hours, and we just don't have the dawn to dusk caveat. Um, but then in the evenings, that at least allows the people that are, like I said, the, the guy that pulls the wooden trailer that parks there all day long, it's gonna at least allow us to rouse them out of there, so, it's, I'm just, it's just a thought.
Councilmember Clausen?
I guess I'm a little confused by the proposed ordinance, if what I've heard is that there are no parking stalls down there.
Right.
And yet what we're being asked to adopt is Editerner Park, other than the marked parking stalls along the east side of the sidewalk.
Creates those parking stalls.
This is creating those parking stalls.
Two, two parking stalls.
Two parking stalls.
What, what's written here creates two parking stalls, where we have none in code right now.
But by practice, there's been more than two, then, is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Yes.
I understand it hasn't been designated by the city, but in practice, there have been more than two vehicles parked along-
Roughly, I would say there's five, and when you get towards Key Bank, it's really just a, it's a one-way driveway, you couldn't park, uh, there.
Right, and, and that's another issue, and I know-
I would, excuse me, Mark, I would, I would support what, uh, Scott has suggested by pulling this piece out of this so that we can study it further, and I would really like to look to see if there's other options, because again, I think this is gonna be a problem in a long area. So I'm going to move to amend the motion that we delete, um, so paragraph K and then any others that I'm not seeing here that references the parking along Editerner Park.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to, to remove the, the-
K from five point five eighty.
K from the proposed, so that is an amendment.
I think it's, I think it's important before we vote, though, and this, I know we don't have dialogue typically with-
I, I think we need to amend this back to a committee and not debate, you know, wordsmith and debate this all night.
Well, no, I, I'm just saying that, I think-
I would, I would-
So we've got a motion and a second. Other councilmember comments on, Councilmember Deener?
If, if the motion prevails and, and it does go back, I'd like to hear more about how we have an inaccessible set of parking spaces that you can exit, uh, and then I'd like to maybe hear more about how many people actually drive to the park to use it. actually drive to the park to use it as a park, not as a place to leach power or anything like that, but as a park.
Right. Well, I think that's my concern. And since Bob's here, I mean, by doing these stalls, you're really talking about having people drive through the loading dock area, which I know Bob had concerns with. So we're going to have to work that out, whether it's some sort of a reciprocal agreement.
We'll figure that out at a committee. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Further discussion from the council members? Okay, hearing none. We're voting on the amendment to remove K from the proposed ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. The amendment carries.
Correct.
So now we're back to the main motion.
Right. And I have, I have a comment. And that is, under that section that we just talked about, I and J, I refers to Paul Powers Park, J refers to Van Zee Park, and they don't have any limited times. It just says limited dawn to dusk. It doesn't say two or four hours.
Yeah, that's right. That's the, it was the, I guess it was the Marina Park that had the time restriction.
And I don't see anything in, yeah, no, Paul Powers and Van Zee, yeah.
It's the Marina Park that has limitations.
Right. But Mark had said a couple times in his commentary this evening that there were, that there was time limits to this, and there's.
Yeah, that was, I was thinking of the Marina Park.
Yeah.
We can always add those.
Mr. Claussen?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, you've got two section Is. I for Paul Powers and I for Rockwell Parking.
Sounds like we just got an extra letter here.
Should be an L.
Yeah. Or now, it could be a K, since we took out K.
There you go.
So we just need to fix the lettering.
Yeah.
In that section. I'm sure the clerk will do that. Okay. Any further discussion of the main motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, we are done with our business. We've got council committee reports. I don't, council finance committee met last week, but everything we met on, other than the financials, was, has been acted on here this evening.
Good. That's I missed it. Thank you.
The financials were positive, and you need to find another meeting date, probably not until January, I don't think is, you need another finance committee meeting. Noah?
We discussed maybe having one December, if we have some significant final budget amendments for the year to come forward that we want to discuss. So we're still going to evaluate any possible budget amendments. And if we feel they're significant, we might schedule one for one of the two meetings in December.
Let us know.
More to come. Economic Development and Tourism, have you met?
We will be meeting December 10th here at 9:30. And I will also take this opportunity to remind council that the KRCC Legislative Reception is this Thursday, beginning at 5:00 up at Clearwater.
I'll be there. Utility Committee, I see you're meeting December 17th. I don't think you've met in a month or more.
No, this is an important meeting, and that's at 9:30 here at City Hall.
And Sewer Advisory, I think you recently met and adopted a budget.
We have, and that was the priority. It was a special meeting just for that purpose. The next meeting is January 16th here at City Hall at 6:30 PM.
Okay. And Land Use?
Land Use meets next on December 3rd at 9:30 at DCD. And I think I reported out on the last Land Use meeting.
You did.
A couple meetings ago.
Okay. And Lodging Tax, have we? Has it been before the council?
It was in consent.
It was in the consent.
It was in the consent.
I slept through that, sorry.
We're good. And then when New Year comes around, we'll have some discussions we'll need to do with the council.
Yep, policy.
Policy.
That's right. Chimes and Lights, there's nothing going on there.
Nothing, not a bit.
Kudos to you, by the way, for the downtown.
The trees are fabulous downtown.
That is great.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your support. It's been amazing. See you all this week, Saturday, 11 o'clock to 7:30. But at the main stage at 5 o'clock, council, as many of you are able to come. It's going to be a great event, and we're hoping that we're going to have good weather. We are going to have a follow-up committee meeting on the 17th at 3:30 here at City Hall.
And the festival's this Saturday night.
It is. It is.
All right. And outside agencies, that council member Ashby mentioned, we've got the KRCC Legislative Event on Thursday night. And then Kitsap Transit, the Kingston service started on Monday, and we had some service on, it's been very successful, good press.
Actually, it started on Finest Friday, where we carried just shy of about 1,000 people to and from. Monday was the first day of commuter operation, where we carried about 540 rides for the day.
Very nice.
Very successful.
Yes, nice job, Mr. Claussen. So on my mayor's report, I'll go quickly here, and then we'll get to citizen comments. So I'm still, you'll see my recommendations for my appointments, probably at the next council meeting. I am still looking for a citizen in our city to serve on the county's Grant Recommendations Committee. I've done a couple of pushes out on Facebook and on our website on that, and I still don't have a candidate. Maureen Wheeler stepped down in that position. And so I still would love to have somebody from our community step forward and participate.
Did you consider asking Kristan Sperry if she would do that, in addition to the other, because she's very involved in?
That was my backup, that is my back plan. And I just didn't want to throw that out there, because then nobody else will volunteer if she's willing to do it all. But that is Plan B. You're correct. And if you missed it, it was, I know it's been a few weeks, Jedi Special Day, and it was very touching. It was very sad, and it's a sad reason we got together, but I am so, you know, that's what, that's what community's about, what we did down there. And Thomas Hunter's in the audience, sitting in the back row. He really knocked it out of the park, putting that event together. I mean, we had, I had people stopping me out on the street, wanting to know when the monster truck show was. I mean, we had monster trucks and boats, and I mean, it was, it was a phenomenal, phenomenal event. And I'm very proud of our community. I'll be bringing forward a resolution next council meeting for, we are, it's our turn for the at-large seat at Kitsap Transit. And I'd love for a council member to volunteer, and we would, you guys would ratify that in a resolution here in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Mayor, I would.
I'm going to withdraw my name.
You may, yeah. And I'm already on the board, so.
Thank you.
I would, I would volunteer, Councilman Rose Pepe.
Okay. You, I would accept. So you've been voluntold that you're.
By my mentor.
Yes, okay. So there's no objection from the other council members. I'll bring that forward at the next meeting. And if you haven't seen them, we have new trees in Clayton Park. There's four new trees in there. Three of them are oak trees. And I can't remember the variety of trees. They're kind of tall and cindrical. Put seven trees, seven or eight trees out on the frontage of the park, too, on the north side of the park. And to get one complaint, somebody was concerned that we planted poplars. They're not poplars. They kind of look like poplars, but they aren't going to grow that tall or fast, so. So go by the park. They're going to look great next summer and for years to come. We've postponed our ribbon cuttings for McCormick Village Park and the pathway until we get those projects completed. And I would like to bring forward a couple of contracts. I want to brief you guys on. One is the chief's contract doesn't, he only allows him to carry 240 hours of vacation annually, and he's 75 hours beyond that. I don't think it's a secret. He's going to retire next year, and we would like to do something like Alan Martin did, where he's on terminal leave and available to us, but not in the office. And with our staffing, short staffing right now, he is out on patrol many times during the day. And so I would like, I'm supportive of amending his contract to allow him to carry an additional 75 hours and not lose those next year. And then we would, you know, pay those out as part of his terminal leave next year. So is there any objection to me bringing that forward? So I would, okay. Sharon, work on contract amendment. And then, as I discussed at our last work study, case, we're going to take the KCR, Community Service Position, and bring that in-house. And their contract expires at the end of the year. And so we don't have a lapse in that employee's job. I would like to, and they've verbally agreed to a month-to-month extension. I hope it's no more than a few weeks, but it allows a month-to-month up till June. And I can't see it going at the same rate without the raise. So we'll see that on the agenda also. That's all I have. The department heads, Mr. Dorsey?
Yes, I have three items. One is, we got our official letter from the Transportation Improvement Board. They had $281 million in grant requests. They only had $9 million, I think, for this region to distribute. So that was for Southwest Old Clifton Road and Shun Hill Roundabout. So we were not successful in our request for, I think it was $1.6 million, but we'll reapply next year. Second item is, we're, if it weren't for the strike, and if it weren't for the natural gas pipeline explosion coming down from Canada, which is affecting the ability to make asphalt, and now the weather, we would have, we'd be into Phase 3 right now, where the Phase 3 traffic returns the Roland and May neighborhood back to those neighbors, and we're not driving through their neighborhood anymore, unfortunately, because we did have the strike, and we did have the natural gas explosion, and there's not enough gas coming into the state to heat up asphalt plants. And now with the rain, it's delaying our paving. So we're hoping that we can start paving Thursday, Friday, to get that final four-inch lift in the north lane between Port Orchard Boulevard and Pottery, where we've moved the traffic to the south. We can get that in, we can move it over. And then we get the roundabout at Pottery, the base paved. And then Pottery, north of the roundabout and south. If we can get that base paving done, that allows us to then move our detour route, where you come up Pottery, instead of turning onto May and Roland, you're just going to go and use the roundabout. And we'll get people not using Tremont Place, the dead end. So I'm really hoping that this rain stops and we can get that paved. Mike's doing everything that he can do to make that happen, and he's working really hard at it.
I'll bring a proclamation.
Yeah, anything that, we just need this to stop. The last thing is, I want to reiterate what the mayor said. So the Jedi's Day, it initially was just an email that said, hey, can Jedi come up to the shop and go sit in a truck? I mean, that's, that's really what it was. It was just, can you just go sit up in a truck in the shop? It suddenly became monster trucks, fire trucks, Public Works, Sheriff, SWAT, boats, monsters. You know, and that was, that was just Thomas that did that. He just started making calls, and it all happened. So the real benefit for the city, though, other than acknowledging Thomas's effort, is the fact that I'm the only exempt person. If your name, or if your name's in the paper, you have to bring in donuts. If your picture's in the paper, you have to bring in pizza. So the Public Works Department's going to benefit from this as well. So, because Thomas is an offender at this point. So, thank you, Thomas.
All right, with that.
Just one quick comment. Went up the other day and walked McCormick Park, and it's nice.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
It's coming together really nice.
Yeah, I walked it Friday.
Yep.
It's phenomenal.
Yep.
Park's good. And then Bay Street, again, it's, we're just down to being able to pave. The railing's been fabricated and set off to be galvanized. We're waiting for that to come back. Those power poles are finally gone. That's been our delay there. So, yeah, we're getting close.
Noah, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide an update on the zoning code update that we've been working on for the last six or seven months. The Planning Commission, at their December meeting next Tuesday, will be reviewing the final draft, attorney-reviewed zoning code update that we've put together. I know several of you are, were planning commissioners previously. They have, they have always requested enough time to digest, and this is a pretty big document. So we're going to give them one more meeting to discuss it and make sure that they understand what they're reviewing before we have a public hearing at the January meeting. And then shortly thereafter, the final zoning code update should be coming to council. I'm hoping that that will happen at the second meeting in January for the city council. But the Planning Commission meeting is supposed to occur on New Year's Day. We have to find an alternate date to have that meeting, and so I don't know when that will be yet. And we'll be sending out notices to affected property owners, mailing notices if they're having any zoning changes that are in any way like a downzone. So I think we have several hundred notices to go out as soon as we pick a planning commission date, and then you'll see it next, in January.
Sharon, do you have anything?
I do have one item tonight. I wanted to circle back on the small cell ordinance that we have been working on for several months. As you know, I believe it was the September work study session that we discussed at last, and the FCC had recently enacted new rules. Actually, at that point, it had been, it hadn't been officially adopted yet. The rules go into effect in January, and we're still working on the revisions to make sure that our ordinance is within federal standards, guidelines. And so we'll, the goal now is to make sure that we have that for the January work study session in a complete format. So hopefully we can adopt it soon after. We have, the city has, as a reminder, about six months from January to get an ordinance in place. And so we'll be well within that timeline.
Chief, you have anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to say to the mayor and the council, and especially the citizens and business owners here, that the issue over at Editerner Park is a priority for me, and we're going to stay on it, and we're going to find a way to eradicate it. We're going to partner with the business owners, like Scott Curvan, and with Bob Hampton, to make sure that we can get that out of there. Parking issues aside. But we will, we will take care of that issue.
Thank you, Chief. Clerk Reinsen, nothing more? Okay. For, yes, Councilmember Lurk.
We need to, as a council, discuss whether we're going to have the neighborhood.
Oh, right.
Okay.
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 Contest?
Okay, we're going, we're going, we're not going away.
Okay.
We're going in the back room, so maybe we'll put our calendars together at that point. Yeah, we, so, I'm sorry. So we, we do have our, it's the next citizen comments period, but we have an executive session, and then I, we have a collective bargaining meeting, too. So probably another 30 minutes or so tonight, so. All right. So thank you for sticking around this evening. Great to see so many faces in the crowd. So we're to our second citizen comment period, and anyone can address the council on any matter at this time. So if you'd like to address the council, please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sue Whitford, representing Kitsap Regional Library, and.
Kathleen Wilson, I'm the branch manager at the Port Orchard Library, right downtown.
We just wanted to say that we are very excited about the proposal and also being part of a community center. We love the, having a library downtown, being close to transit, it's really important. The number of people that come into the library is over 15,000 a month, which I think helps with businesses in retail that might be in some of those buildings as well. But we also have another example up in Kingston of a library and a community center that has worked out really, really well. And so anyway, I just think that it's a fabulous idea, and we're very excited about it.
And being one of the only waterfront libraries in the country, we're really excited that we can continue to be one of the only waterfront libraries in the country.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address the council this evening?
I'd just like to thank you for your support this evening of the downtown redevelopment project and the community center. And the comments about the public outreach and transparency, duly noted, you have our, you have the assurance of the group that the outreach will be robust, will hold many non-required public meetings, et cetera, to get the word out and take in citizen input. So thank you.
For the record, he spoke earlier, that was Mike Brown from the Sound West Group. Others wishing to address the council? All right, I'm going to close citizen comment. Thank you for coming this evening. And council, we're going to go into executive session, start with 15 minutes pursuant to litigation under RCW 4230-110, and no action will be taken. After the executive session, we will adjourn the meeting and have. After the executive session, we will adjourn the meeting and have a brief collective bargaining meeting.